Good morning. Close meeting to order. This is Amara County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, October 8, 2024. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States Constitution, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning. Thank you. The board met this morning, closed session. Item one, Conference of Labor Negotiators, an update and direction was given. Item two, Public Employee Discipline, Dismissal, Release, direction was given. Item four, Conference of County Councils, the existing litigation, direction was given. And item five, the confidential amendments were approved. With that removed down, the public matter is not on the agenda. Is there any members of public like their addresses or in any item, not on the agenda?
Okay. Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Lois McDonald, and I'm here to read a letter that was sent to each of the supervisors, also the county council, and to the registrar voters. And that was delivered last week to each of you. So I'd like to read it to the public. And we are going to, there's four of us, and we'll each take a turn to, we can read the whole thing. And so the letter is called A Cease and Desist. The state of California has passed a law called AB 969. It was enacted in October of 2023 using the urgency clause. The bill states, it will declare that it is to take effect immediately as it is in urgency. Section two of the bill states, this act is an urgency statute necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety within the meaning of Article Four of the California Constitution, and shall go into immediate effect. The facts constituting the needing, the necessity are, in order to ensure that county election officials know what voting systems they will be using, particularly with the upcoming 2024 March presidential primary. It is now necessary for this act to take effect immediately. The California Constitution, Article Four, Section 8D states, in pertinent part, it states in pertinent part, quote, urgency statutes are those necessary for immediate preservation of the public, any facts supporting the assertion of a threat to public peace, health, or safety. In this assembly bill then are no facts stated either that any election official was unaware of what voting systems they would be using, not any facts among, not any facts amounting to any urgency within the meaning of the California Constitution, Article Four. Additionally, voting by citizens, that is accurately counted, does not impact, quote, public peace, health, or safety. Thus, there is absolutely no logic, legal or constitution basis for the alleged urgency. Therefore, the use of the urgency clause to bypass normal legislative process was and is unlawful, and depriving the citizens of California of an opportunity for public referendum, misusing the urgency clause to avoid checks on legislation, and prevent public input, is an abuse of legislative authority, is preventing citizens from having a voice in the legislative process as required by the California State Constitution.
You've been placed in the unfortunate position where you were unable to conduct the 2024 general election without breaking either state law or federal laws. You cannot comply with newly enacted state laws without breaking federal laws. You cannot comply with federal laws without breaking this newly enacted state law. Many of our elections are decided by less than 100 votes, and some by less than 10 votes. Inaccurate voter rolls are an incontestable fact. The Election Integrity Project California reported that they found 1,834,789 more registered voters than eligible citizens in the state voter rolls, including active and inactive voters. HAVA has enacted due to the 2000 Bush-Gore election debacle, which greatly divided voters and destroyed voter trust, simply articulated if voter rolls are not accurate and compliant. Elections cannot be certified as compliant or accurate meeting, accurately meeting the standard set within HAVA. HAVA was designed to provide a zero-trust model for voting systems, which includes transparency to address trust issues when using electronic voting machines. Although election fraud existed in individual local races, these widespread trust issues did not exist before electronic voting machines. In addition, HAVA falls under the Civil Rights Act, therefore certifying inaccurate or non-compliant elections violates every citizen's civil rights when elections are not accurate or election laws have been violated.
I'm Georgia Fox, Sutter Creek, and I would like to talk about financial reasons to comply with HAVA. Not only is HAVA a federal law, but because this county has accepted federal money pursuant to HAVA, it is also contract law. This contract, this county entered a contract with the federal government when it accepted funds under the Help America Vote Act. The Board of Supervisors voted to accept these funds. County council signed off on the contracts, and the ROV clerk recorder agreed to comply with the terms of the contract. If this county follows California law, and specifically AB 969, the county cannot meet the contractual requirements of the Help America Vote Act. If the county intends to follow California law, the county will deprive the citizens of the transparency required, resulting in a misappropriation of federal funds. Failing to follow the federally mandated HAVA, the county would have to return the HAVA funds to the federal government. If the county returns the HAVA funds, the county cannot pay for the election equipment that the county is required by California law to use.
Teri Soldate, Sutter Creek. Board of Supervisors have a problem. Each of you sworn oath to the United States Constitution and to the Constitution of the state of California. Both constitutions guarantee citizens the right to have their vote accurately counted and to elect their representatives. Your oath is not to the government, but to the Constitution and the people you represent. Certifying uncertifiable elections in a federal election can reach the level of treason. Do not assume just because county election officials have not been held accountable to this point, that they will not be held accountable now and in the future. We pray those involved do not expose themselves or the county to this financial obligation. We respectfully demand that the county comply with both the California and federal constitutions rather than following newly enacted and unconstitutional California laws. First, the process must be transparent, and the counts must be verified. Second, only eligible voters should be allowed to vote. To meet these requirements, the county should have one day hand-counted elections requiring ID to vote and mail-in ballots limited to legitimate absentee voters. Your thoughtful consideration of the matters contained in this letter and the requirements of your oath to the United States and California constitutions are greatly appreciated. The favor of a reply is also requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of public? Seeing none, or members have any items? Well, moving on down the consent agenda, there's one item I'd like to recuse myself on, it is eight R. So maybe we could take the consent agenda minus eight R, and then I'll probably step down and take eight R. So.
Okay, move to approve consent with the exception of eight R.
We have a motion by Axe and a second by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Chair is unanimous. Pass the Gavler Supervisor Crew, and I'll leave the room.
So why don't you just close your eyes and your ears?
I'll make a motion to approve eight R.
Second.
All right, we had a motion by Supervisor Axe, a second by Supervisor Forster. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four, zero, one.
Supervisor Onetto, I just want to clarify that you said you were going to leave the room, and I just, for the public, saw that you did not leave the room. I just want to make it clear that I advised you on a consent item where there's no discussion. It's not necessary that you leave the room because there's no, I appreciate the clarification.
He wasn't fast enough.
Okay, well, thank you. So consent is done. On a regular agenda, we have item six A. This is a presentation of 2023 crop report by Eric Mayberry.
Mr. Chair?
Mr.?
We didn't approve the agenda yet.
Thank you.
We did?
No, you're right.
I believe we did.
So would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion by Supervisor Axe and a second by Supervisor Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
All right.
Chair is five, zero. Thank you.
Full steam ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Chairman Onetto, members of the board. I am here, as you said, to present the 2023 agricultural and livestock report. For members of the public, I do have a couple extra copies back there. Bonnie would be glad to hand those out if somebody wants to follow along. So the first page is the letter which says that there's been a 7% decrease from previous year's production value of $38 million. And I would like to just kind of go through each page here with you all. So if you flip to the next page where it talks about fruit and nut crops, the wine grapes, a large industry in our county, there was actually an increase in price but a decrease in per acre production. But that still resulted in about a million-dollar increase in total production values. Walnuts, on the other hand, had an increase in per acre production of walnuts there. But there was no change in price really per ton. So, you know, that's why you see an increase there. If you go to the field crop, one at the next page, you'll see that there is a sharp decrease in the price of alfalfa resulting in about a million-dollar loss over the prior year's production values. If you flip to the next page.
But you might want to state, though, that during COVID, alfalfa went up sky high.
It was a great year for alfalfa a couple of years ago. That was true.
Yeah, no, it wasn't a great year.
I would say that it fell to a normal, a normal price. Well, if you got any crop, that's the way it always is, is if there's a, you know, a flood in some part of the state, those people get nothing, but the people that do survive actually get a pretty good price. So there's always kind of a.
I don't see a million-dollar difference, maybe $300,000 difference?
In the price of alfalfa, that is a fact. But when I said alfalfa, I apologize, I meant all.
Okay.
The crops, all the field crops.
Okay.
There. And you're right, it's about a half, about a half a million dollars there for total field crops. If you flip the page and you look at timber products, I'm not going to get that number wrong because it's zero. They didn't harvest anything in our county. We get those numbers from the Board of Equalization, so we don't necessarily get an explanation for those numbers. But my guess is that they were harvesting in other areas, maybe after a fire or something.
All those log trucks I see go by, they were coming from somewhere else?
Well, so I've been following log trucks down every day, but I don't live in this county. So therefore, it's possible that they're coming down from either El Dorado or Calaveras or something.
Also, they're probably National Forest, a lot of burnt logs.
Which don't count in our report.
Yeah.
You're correct.
And a lot of it, what I've been watching is they were coming up Oma Ranch Road and coming across onto 88, and that's where Oma Ranch Road is really tired.
Yeah. So, yes, thank you for those clarifications. I appreciate that. You know, if you look on the other page there for the livestock and poultry, we do see a decrease in the number of head of cattle, decreased resulting in about a $2 million total value decrease over last year. And the net result is about a 7% decrease overall in production values. There is a recapitulation on the next page which kind of ties that all together, hopefully. And then, of course, due to popular demand by the board from previous years, we do have a 10-year recapitulation showing, you know, that we're pretty similar to where we were in 2014. So.
Yeah, but inflation, that's not good.
It is not good. That is true. I have, I've been told before that farming is the one legal form of gambling in all 50 states. Some years you do well, some years you do poorly. Unfortunately, if you get three years of drought, for instance, or a hard freeze two years in a row, it tends to put people out of business. So farming is something that is under threat from increases in labor costs, fuel, all costs are going up for farmers. And these values don't show that. They just show what they get on the wholesale market level for the commodity. And, you know, that is something that, you know, you really need to keep in mind because farmers are struggling.
Missed one. No, they are. And you missed one factor.
Yes, sir.
Regulatory burden.
There is a regulatory burden. I agree, and I'm a part of that. Thank you.
I think you try to make our local burden light as you can, which I do appreciate. I think something else that's coming, just, I think a lot of people are probably aware of it, but I think there's a, there's a bloodbath coming shannin' to a valley. It's going to be pretty, pretty bad. I think you'll see it in next year's crop report, would be my guess. So, yeah, I think it's good. They're struggling out there, and I think they're having a really bad year. Something like I'm.
It's difficult when, you know, you have a crop planted by your grandfather, and he really likes infandel. And, you know, today's tastes or whatever do not follow what your grandfather planted. And unlike alfalfa, which you can change on a whim, you know, a lot of these estate-grown varieties of grapes, they've been in the ground for a long, long time. And it's, you know, you can't turn on a dime, as it were. And so you're kind of stuck with what you've, what you've got. And that makes it very difficult.
As you're on the last page, got measuring units, meters.
Yeah, we do put in the weights and measures. It's not a part of the agricultural crop production, but it is something that our department does, and it does affect the agricultural community. So we, and we add an extra page.
What does the sub mean?
Submeter. So for instance, I, my house has an electric meter on it, and it's read by PG&E, which is regulated by the Public Utilities Commission of California. But if you lived in a marina apartment complex or an older mobile home park built before 1972, they were allowed a submeter, where they have just a meter from PG&E at the front of it, and each unit is read by the manager. And those are regulated by myself and my staff that go out there and test those meters once every 10 years.
Kind of like a master meter, then?
Exactly. Yeah, they pay PG&E based upon the master meter, and then they charge the, each tenant based upon a meter.
The other thing I'd say is the picture of you and your staff, you might want to position it differently next year because two of your staff are kind of in the dark.
Well, I'm overshadowing the clerical staff.
I didn't want to say that.
Which is, I think, was a, was a artistic, artistic statement, perhaps.
Maybe have Larry and you take the picture next time.
Yeah, that's a good, good, good call.
Quick question. Now that we've got these charging stations running around.
Yes.
Are we going to be required to check them also?
Absolutely. Anything that weighs, measures, or counts, anything in the county, I am required to test if it's being done for commercial purposes. But California made a decision a couple of years ago in 2021 because the, the companies that were creating that equipment, for instance Tesla behind Melon Phase 9 or there, they just put in a, you know, 10 charging locations there. They gave them a certain amount of time before they were required to be tested by my office if they put in equipment prior to January 1, 2021. And so if they come online, like if they installed a new location today or whatever, we would go out and test it within the year. Currently, the Division of Measurement Standards, which is the California oversight entity for weights and measures, purchased five electrical charging station standards. So they're the, you know, the units that you go out and plug in there, and it tests the equipment. They purchased five, which they will lend to us to use. But again, at this time, we haven't had any new electrical vehicle service equipment that's been installed since 2021. Those are all installed just prior to this, this regulation taking effect. And I don't think that was a coincidence. I think that there was a lot of effort to get these things in before they have to be tested. So they had like nine years or whatever in 2030 or something like that, 2029 maybe. We're going to begin to test that old equipment. But anything new that comes in has to obey all the new regulations, like have a price and so forth. That's available. You know, they'll all be, have to be able to use for credit cards or whatever.
Do you have coordination between the Air District and yourself? Because I think there's one that was put in after that, but I'm not, I'm not positive on time.
I will, I will look into that one. They are required to let us know, to give us what is called a place and service report within 24 hours of a new installation. The same is true of a gas station. You know, they put a new gas station in, they have to let us know. But I will, I will take a look into that.
Appreciate it.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Nope, I think you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any members of public like to comment on the crop report? This item, CNN. Moving on to item six B. This is Waste Management, Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Board Authorization. I was signed with franchise agreement to Delta Container Services Incorporated. Mr. Gardner.
Chairman Onetto and supervisors, I believe I have a conflict of interest on this matter and then the, or these matters, because my son was awarded a college scholarship from ACES. So I'm going to step down, and Glenn's gonna, Glenn's gonna handle it.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Chairman Onetto and members of the board. We have a, an item here. ACES alerted and sent the required documentation to the county that they intend to sell their business, and they want to assign the franchise agreement to the purchase.
Quick question, um, and now that we've got these uh, charging stations running around.
Yes.
Are we gonna be required to check them also?
Absolutely, anything that weighs, measures, or counts, anything in the county, I am required to test if it's being done for commercial purposes. Um, but California made a decision a couple of years ago in twenty twenty-one because the um, the, the companies that were creating that equipment, um, for instance Tesla behind uh, Melon Phase Nine or there, they just put in a um, you know, ten charging locations there. Um, they gave them a certain amount of time before they were required to be tested by my office, if they put in equipment prior to January first, twenty twenty-one. And um, so if they come online, like if they installed a new location today or whatever, we would go out and test it within the year. Um, currently, um, the Division of Measurement Standards, which is the California um, oversight um, entity for weights and measures, um, purchased five electrical charging station standards. So they're the, you know, the units that you go out and plug in there and, and it tests the equipment, they purchased five, which they will lend to us to use, but again, at this time, uh, we haven't had any new um, electrical vehicle service equipment that's been installed since twenty twenty-one. Those are all installed just prior to this, this regulation taking effect, and I don't think that was a coincidence. I think that there was a lot of effort to get these things in before they have to be tested. So they had like nine years or whatever in twenty thirty or something like that, twenty twenty-nine maybe. Um, we're gonna begin to test that old equipment, but anything new that comes in has to obey all the new regulations, like have a price and so forth. Um, that's available, use, you know, they'll all be, have to be able to use for credit cards or whatever.
Do you have coordination between uh, the Air District and yourself? Uh, cause I think there's one that was put in after that, but I'm not, I'm not positive on time.
I will, I will look into that one, um, they are required to let us know, to give us what is called a place and service report within twenty-four hours of a new installation. The same is true of a gas station, you know, they put a new gas station in, they have to let us know. Um, um, but I will, I will take a look into that.
Appreciate it.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Nope, I think you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any members of public like to comment on the crop report? This item, CNN, moving on to item six B, this is waste management discussion of possible action relative to board authorization that was signed with franchise agreement to Delta Container Services Incorporated. Mr. Gardner.
Chairman Onetto and supervisors, I believe I have a conflict of interest on this matter and then the, or these matters, uh, because my son was awarded a scholar, by a college scholarship from ACES. So I'm gonna step down and Glenn's gonna, Glenn's gonna handle it.
Thank you.
Good morning.
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 Morning, Jeff.
Chairman Onetto and members of the board. Um, we have a, an item here. ACES alerted and sent the required documentation to the county that they intend to sell their business and they want to assign the franchise agreement uh, to the purchaser. So we have, we have met with, with ACES and representatives of um, the company that wishes to purchase ACES. Uh, the ad hoc solid waste committee met a couple of times, and along with the representatives from them, and discussed any items uh, that were pertinent to and associated with the assignment of the franchise agreement. In the agreement itself that the board approved uh, back on June twenty-third of twenty twenty, it specifically lays out uh, what's required if ACES does wish to sell the business and assign the franchise agreement to a new owner. Uh, and essentially, as long as uh, the new owner meets certain criteria, uh, they've been in the business for a while, they, they don't have any blemishes on their record um, at the state level uh, or with Cal Recycle or, or anyone else. Um, that essentially the, the county board um, will approve the assignment unless something should come up. Uh, we determined, along with county council going through the process, ACES providing the information to us, um, that included uh, information about the company, in this case, the company is Delta Container Services, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of Republic Services, which is a huge multi-billion dollar corporation. Uh, they provided us uh, uh, audited financial statements. Uh, they have provided us unaudited financial statements on Delta Container, but they provided audited financial statements which are consolidated uh, from, from um, Republic Services and their, you know, uh, two-hundred-page audit report. But we did get direct detail on re, on uh, Delta Container. Uh, the last, and I, I believe I sent it to you in, in an email subsequent to the packet coming out, uh, was some i- i- additional information, company description on Republic Services itself. Uh, I'm sure Paul Mullenelli and members of Republic Services would be happy to describe uh, what's going on from their end. Uh, but from our end, what I did was, we, we wrote up a resolution, we looked at the contract. The contract has uh, two pertinent areas in it, the first being relative to the assignment. If in fact ACES did the assignment, the period of time for which the contract would be in place would get reduced. I believe section, I think it was three point two of, of the agreement states that in the event uh, the, any assignment determined in the agreement automatically revert to a ten-year term. At this point, I think when ACES took it over, they had a fifteen-year plus five, plus five. Uh, and they have by about six, uh, well, uh, they, that was four years ago, so they would have uh, eleven plus five, plus five. Uh, that's gonna revert down to ten years. And the other section that was pertinent to the, to the change is everything basically that it lays out in the agreement associated with an assignment, information they have to give us, um, uh, things, things that have to take place uh, before they're, before they're able to do that. They have to notify Cal Recycle, those documents are all included in the packet. Um, anything else, uh, the other agreements that are in here, uh, the resolution, we have an execution of the amendment for the operating agreement, uh, and execution of the second amendment to the franchise agreement. We don't have currently a lease on the administration building at this time. The way I wrote the resolution up, uh, we did go through the lease, the lease was prepared by General Services Administration. Glenn has reviewed the lease, we, we haven't found anything in the lease that we believe needs to be changed. Uh, but the way I wrote the author, the um, recommendation up was in the event that some small items were to come up in the lease, that you would approve county council, um, making those changes in, in case they're necessary. Uh, so effectively, um, what we have here is, is legal documents to affect the change. Uh, we have a resolution uh, that will accept Delta Container as the new owner once the transaction takes place. Uh, we do have a limit in here of a hundred and twenty days for that transaction to take place. So in the event that they do not come to agreement within that period of time, they would have to come back to the board and, and essentially go through this again. Uh, I don't imagine we would go through all the documentation and all that, but they would just reapply once the agreement was in place, we don't anticipate that they won't make the hundred and twenty-day um, deadline for that.
Did you have William Shawan review this at all, or see any need to do that?
Uh, no, we didn't have William do that, the, William was in, integrally involved in doing the initial franchise agreement. Um, and the franchise, the franchise agreement went from a very small document to a very thick document. Uh, and one of the things William did bring, we, he didn't review the, this transaction itself, but what we did talk about is moving forward, the kinds of documentation we need to get from Republic Services that would be pertinent to the county, moving forward that we think would be more important than some of the documentation that ACES gives us now. For instance, uh, Republic is known for running large equipment and overweighting their trucks. Um, so one of the things is they have to self-report on whether or not they over, they have an overweight on the truck and that kind of thing. So that kind of documentation on a quarterly basis would be important for the county, so we make sure we're not destroying our roads. Uh, that's one example. Um, but those are the types of things that we want to make sure we get included moving forward, uh, so we can um, take care of our own infrastructure as well.
And with them assuming the franchise agreement, everything would stay the same as far as um, uh, no allowance to bring in hazardous waste or things like that?
That, nothing changes.
Okay.
Well, there, there is, there is, there is a minor change. ACES has already entered into an agreement, I believe for a year, and maybe Mr. Mullenelli can, can address this. Uh, to take, we were taking all our, our waste to Kiefer in Sacramento County, and now they have started taking the waste to Forward over in Stockton. I, I, I know there's a, it's a longer travel distance, so it, there's a little bit higher cost in doing that. Uh, but the, the Forward facility has given them a reduction in the rate, whereas Sac County keeps going up. Uh, two years ago, Sac County raised their rates forty percent. And um, and so the, the offset uh, to taking it to the Stockton facility has been, has been a reduction in the cost of the tipping fee uh, to take it there. Uh, that being said, you know, there's, Forward is owned by Republic Services. So there, it's, it's um, a situation where we, we've included Forward Landfill as one of the authorized sites to take the stuff now. What got, what came up in the ad hoc committee meeting was what is, what is, what is to stop them from after year one, raising the rates on us? There really specifically isn't anything in the amendment to your agreement. Um, we did talk about it uh, with respect to the cost at Kiefer versus the cost at Forward and the additional cost to tran, to take the stuff to Forward. So if, if you wanted to modify the agreement at all, I would say maybe uh, you have some, you change the wording a little so that there's always a cost analysis between um, what it's costing for the key, what it would cost to take it to Kiefer versus what it would cost to take it to Forward site and get the best rate for the or get the best cost for the ratepayers of the county.
Yeah, I'd be happy with that, because you know, it needs to be a push at, at the least. When you figure in the extra transportation costs, otherwise you can say, yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's five bucks a ton cheaper going to Forward, well, maybe adding the transportation cost, it might be five bucks more expensive.
Right, right. It's just an analysis, I think this should be done. Uh, that could be done maybe during a rate increase every year, during the rate review each year. Uh, that might be a good time to do that analysis, uh, but there should be something in there. Um, and I'm not, and I'm not sure the language maybe, maybe Glenn is, with respect to, since, since the only authorized site up until now has been Kiefer Landfill. Um, I don't believe there's probably language in there to say some cost analysis needs to be done to see if, if we're paying more, if the ratepayers are getting the best bang for their buck.
Yeah, we should probably have something like that, yeah.
Is, Glenn might want to address some stuff, I don't know. Um, he reviewed all the documents before, before the packet was put together for the board, so.
Yeah, I just had a, a couple of, of minor changes that, that we had already worked out on the um, on the lease agreement. And uh, and I think we're in agreement, but it's just not reflected in here, so I just want to make that clear. It's the as-is provision and also an insurance provision that would require the less C to increase the insurance if by regional standards, the insurance is deficient.
You know, I said it's, it probably doesn't matter, probably will never matter, but under like um, the groundwater monitoring obligations, or doing remedial work, would there ever be a um, a reason, it talks about being able to access the premises during normal business hours? Would there ever be a time that we might need to come in on emergency basis outside business hours?
We have access to, to the site no matter when, twenty-four-seven. Um, e- even though um, ACES locks the gate in the front, we have, it's daisy chained, so our locks are always on there, and we always have access to the site. We also have additional access through a construction fence site, uh, a little ways from the main entrance to the place, so.
The only thing is, the agreement doesn't say that. I mean, it just, it talks about um, you gotta give them five days, five days um, notice, and um.
I, I think that's, I think that's referring to the M and P site.
The, the, the monitoring wells?
Mm-hmm. Those, those are the ones that are on the M and P site.
I don't, I don't really like this, but I understand where, I've talked to Paul and Paul Junior, and I understand where they're at, that they're, they're not the ones, only ones making the call here, they got a lot of partners, so. But anyway, hey, things change.
Well, and, and that's why you wrote the reduction in the, in the assignment time down, in the event that some, in the event this were to happen. You've, you've basically taken out the plus five, plus five, and reduced the main lease down to a ten-year lease, so, or franchise.
Yeah, it doesn't say, it just talks about on the premises, the tenant and the premises, so it's addressing um.
Yeah, I'd have to review that, but I believe that's the, we have two monitoring wells on M and P's over, on the other side, M and P's fence over there.
MR four A and MW sixteen, and a gas probe?
Yeah, those are the ones on M and P's site, and we have to alert them five days in advance in order to get on their site.
Okay, so this is probably just a confusion, but, okay.
Yeah.
I'm good then.
Okay. Uh, any questions for the franchise?
Actually, I have a couple, um. The uh, both our transfer stations are staying open, so there's nothing changing in, in there, in that zone, is that correct?
As, you know, that would be a good question for them to come up and answer, I think.
Okay.
Uh, with regard to what's gonna happen in terms of all of, how, all the business is gonna continue and everything, I think that'd be a good thing for them to, information for, for them to provide to you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Paul Mullenelli Senior with ACES Waste Services. And as I was collecting my thoughts this morning, I thought, well, I may not be able to say that too much longer. Been a part of me for fifty years, uh. There are no changes uh, to be made in transfer station hours, um, hours of operation, that's gonna all stay the same, the operation will stay the same. Uh, if you have specific questions, I'll be glad to answer them, I have a representative of uh, Delta Container uh, here, I believe my son Jason is zoomed in, and uh, we have Paul Junior, my son, and Johnny Plasse uh, can answer any questions you may have specifically.
Well, Paul, when I said I don't like it, what I meant was I don't like losing the, the family, family um, business. Uh, we had a corporation in here once before, and they want, weren't always the best partners, so I appreciate that that you're going to be sticking around and Paul Junior for a while, but eventually you're not gonna be around, so.
Thank you for that, uh, eighty-two years old, I'm not gonna be around too much longer.
Well, that was, that's not what I was talking about.
I know.
Yeah, it's kind of, wording was a little bit different there.
You're getting deeper by the minute.
Right, Paul Junior is going to continue working, uh, Johnny Plasse will probably take a, a more important role in the operation, and uh, I feel the same way, Richard, uh, uh, it's not easy. So I can tell you.
I remember Paul, we were talking. I sold the tire shop and I realized at the end of the day that I needed a ride home. He took my phone, my pickup, I said, hey, you gotta give me a ride home. That's when reality hit me.
Yeah, and I'm worried, I'm not gonna have to pay for garbage service.
You will. But congratulations, job well done.
Well, thank you, thank you, um. I may have to come back and thank you more properly, uh. It's been uh, fifty years almost, I think I first appeared before your Board of Supervisors in November of uh, nineteen seventy-five. And we've had a great relationship uh, with the county, it's part of our life. But we just, so many uh, uh, things challenging a small business like us. You mentioned uh, Chairman Onetto about regulations, well, it hits us too. Um, the cost of equipment, uh, it's just everything that, uh, everybody at home is uh, experiencing with, at the stores, has affected us too. Two trucks, uh, these days, by the time we finance them, is a million dollars for two trucks. We carry a lot of debt for a small, small business, and that scares us, uh. And we've, I, I, and I think we've done a good job in as, as best we can to keep the rates uh, low, and if you check our rates uh, throughout the state, we're, we're probably on the low side. Uh, so I think we've done a good job with that, but uh, I think it's just time for us to, to, for me anyway, to move on, uh. Uh, most people retire in their sixties, and I'm still doing it in my eighties, so.
Gotta smell a few roses.
My sixties now too, so, last week.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna keep working.
Yeah.
You're Italian, you gotta work.
Hmm?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
I do have a couple questions, um. Since we're going with a larger firm now, like AB thirteen eighty-three, is, is any of that type of the recycled capability gonna change instead of a, a very local company?
Uh.
I don't know if California's gonna sink their teeth into that type of.
Uh, I, we have Manny Gavea here, uh, come on up Manny, you might answer that question, uh, how it relates to uh.
So I think fortunately for you all in the counties, you guys are exempt from thirteen eighty-three, so that doesn't change whoever your service provider is.
Okay.
Yes, we have the capabilities of fulfilling all that compliance, which we do extensively in other areas that have to have every single bell and whistle of that regulation.
And then um, uh, again, I'm asking again, is both transfer stations staying open?
Yes.
So nothing's changing in that aspect?
Nothing, nothing will change.
Um, and then my last one.
By the way.
Oops, sorry.
As far as the transfer station hours, I think it's by contract, where dict, hours are dictated.
Right. And then my last one is, we kind of had a verbal, um, I want to say talk, conversation, I will say, is uh, the street there at the Pine Grove Transfer Station, that, you know, where it enters onto eighty-eight, that, cause your property, you know, you talked about widening that, is that still a vision for the new company?
It, it, well, we are survey, we're estimating the cost of it all, uh, uh. I don't know when or it will be done, but right now there's no plans, I believe currently, to expand that road. We understand the problem there.
Right.
But it's not off the table, if what you're.
Okay, that's, I just, I just want to make sure it's not, not in the vision for down the road, because it's, you know, it's a very important thing, you know, if your truck's sitting there trying to make the left end of there.
At seven forty-five in the morning, it's just a steady stream of cars.
It is, it truly is. It is. It truly is, and.
Just to show you how this county is going, I once took the snowmobile from the yard in Pine Grove and went through Pine Acres. Couldn't do that today, 'cause there's so many people running around, but it's the old days, yeah.
And that's, you know, and that's what I'm really hoping for, is that, you know.
As you know, I think, we bought that, the old Y Rock Doctor's Office right there at the entrance for that purpose, so we'd have a space that where we can widen it. It's going to come, but.
I'm just hoping sooner than later, because it's just a, it's such a pinch point for that area, that, you know, and then it's not just for your big trucks, it's, you know, myself, I'm going left, trying to go up country, and I can't get out of there, and I've got this, you know, eight-foot-wide trailer behind me, and it, it's just, it's.
Little hairy there.
It's a little scary. It's a little pucker factor, every time.
We've recently had it surveyed, so we underst, we're understanding what the expansion will look like on that road, in that intersection, but there's no immediate plans.
I understand. I just, I just wanna make sure it's just not totally forgotten about, you know, that's the, that's my.
Slow process of increasing the allowable tonnage. Our thoughts are when that starts to take process, the widening of that entrance will be part of that.
Okay.
And then not to just the future.
I appreciate it.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Manny Guevea.
Okay, thank you, Manny.
Are there any members of the public that'd like to comment on this issue? Nope, seeing none, no zoomers. Nope. I need some action.
All right, what is, all right, board authorizes to assign the franchise agreement to Delta Container Services. There's Action 1 is adopt a resolution approving the assignment of the solid waste franchise agreement. Can we do them all at one time? Yes, fine? Okay, sorry, didn't have. 2 is approve execution of the amendment to the operating transportation and disposal agreement and assignment and consent. 3 is approve execution of the Second Amendment to the franchise agreement and consent and assignment. 4 is authorize staff to finalize a restated and amended lease for the Buena Vista Landfill Administration Building, and for the Board Chairman to sign the stated and amended lease. Second.
You know, as part of that, we just make, wouldn't, wouldn't be a problem if they cleaned up that language and that groundwater monitoring.
We'll fix that.
Yeah, you'll fix that, okay. We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carry unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Again, job well done.
And thank you. Wasn't always easy, but it's never work. I enjoyed it.
Overall, I'd say you've done a very good job, 'cause minimal, minimal calls.
The RAM process implemented, it was, it worked much smoother.
I agree.
Yep.
Great methodology process.
It satisfied transparency. And it, that continues.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you again.
Yeah, getting back to where I was.
We're not going anywhere.
We had not many calls from people complaining, and you serve a lot of customers, so overall, you done a pretty good job, appreciate that.
And we truly appreciate how much Aces has done for the community, as in all your donations and every, all the rest of that, and.
And the new company has pledged to do this similar.
That's awesome.
Moving on, item 6C, this is General Administration, RFP 24-21, space lease for Health and Human Services. And you know, Greg, I guess we never got to this in closed session, so.
That's a separate, that's a separate issue.
Separate.
Okay.
It'll come later. John Hopkins, General Services Director, morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So this item's on the agenda, because we're, I'm surprised how fast 20 years has gone, but back in 04, 05, the county embarked on a RFP process for the Health and Human Services Building. And throughout that, that period of time, we're, we're now at a position to where we need to look at some other options, as we've had, you know, we've enjoyed that property, but we've also had some challenges at that property. Staff is looking forward to launching this RFP sometime in November. With that said, our, on the discussion for today with the board is to talk about whether or not you want to add to the RFP, giving up a portion, or maybe even all of the property of Wicklow Way as an, as an additional enticement, and an opportunity to see what results from that in a build-to-suit, maybe for the Health and Human Services Building on that property, if, if a developer was enticed enough to do that. I would tell you that I have a commitment from a local developer right now that is interested in submitting an RF, a proposal for this build-to-suit. And, and the, the property, or the RFP, I should say, is for space. So it, it doesn't have to be a build-to-suit, it could be tenant improvements, it could be multiple buildings. There's a lot of options that we've written into the RFP for, for opportunities for the, you know, for the board in the future to take a look at all those opportunities. But when we look at the, when I looked at the Wicklow Way property, there's also maybe an additional opportunity to offer up some of that property, and maybe even spur some development there. I did talk with Chuck Beatty about this issue, and he's also, I don't know if Chuck's here, Chuck's in his office, but he's available if we, if you need to talk to him about any of the restrictions that would be, or requirements of that property for Wicklow, if you were to consider that. But before we launch the RFP, discussion is, Chuck just showed up, good. Discussion is to talk about whether or not you wanna do that or not. I know that staff is excited about doing this, and, and seeing what other opportunities we have than, compared to where we're at right now. Yes, sir?
I'd be afraid to offer that upfront, because it's like the first one who develops Wicklow's going to have probably some other obligations too. At least to be the first one to pay for it, and then get reimbursement for transportation improvements. So I'd wanna be careful on that.
Well, it's up to you.
Well, I can understand that, but I would, I would entertain it, though. I mean, it's something.
I'm not saying I wouldn't entertain it, but I think.
So you have to remember.
Anybody who goes in there needs to, to look at the big picture.
Right.
About what kind of infrastructure needs to be put in for transportation.
So keep in mind that I'm talking about adding that in the RFP, and what would result in that is a developer providing a proposal or multiple proposals to consider that. You don't have to accept it, but to maybe look at that opportunity might be a good thing.
Yeah, I think a developer would probably, I mean, it'd be a way to possibly lower their costs.
It would be. It might end up being more favorable in a, in a build-to-suit, or, like I said, or even spur development. I mean, I've been, you guys all know this, I've been, whether it's Carbondale or Wicklow or any of our properties, getting it off of the, the public, out of the county's hands and back on the tax rolls is a good thing. So that's, it, it's another sort of double benefit there if somebody was to say, hey, yeah, we'll take 40 acres, or we'll take the 200 acres, and we will comply with.
Not the whole thing, no.
Well, you could, if they complied with the planning element, and they wanted to develop all of that. So it's, it's whether or not you wanna offer up a portion, or all of it, and just make that note in the RFP, and see what comes out of that in proposals.
Reason to say not all of it, John, is down the road somewhere, I, I see, it probably won't be in my lifetime, I, I could see the county moving a lot, a lot of their infrastructure in that location, so you don't have buildings all over the place.
Well, you could carve out, you could put that in the RFP, that you carve out a certain portion of it, 20 acres for county use only, the rest of it's to be developed as, as planned.
I think the original plan was 30 acres for.
30, whatever you want.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
There's no commitments here. It's just to see what might shake out by adding that to the RFP, and you don't have to.
And I think our plan so far of letting everybody drive by and hope they figure out we wanna sell it, hasn't been working too well.
No.
So a, a good developer is gonna come in and look at that, and know all their, their options, and what their requirements are gonna be, so that's good. I don't have a problem including it.
Question is, do you wanna include a portion of it, or you include the entire thing, and like I said, Chuck is here to talk about those restrictions or, or obligations someone would have if you were to include all of it, and if you wanna hear from him, you can.
Well, there is a specific plan being developed for it, so.
There is.
I would assume.
But not all of it.
We could follow that to some extent.
But I don't know, I haven't seen one with, there's actual carve-out for government buildings. I don't know if there is or not.
I thought we put one in there.
Come on up here.
Hey. I'll switch you. Alright, thanks. Good morning, Chuck Beatty with the Planning Department. The, the Wicklow Way specific plan is, we've, we've been through the draft EIR, public comments have closed on that, and we're trying to move forward with the final EIR. There are some budget issues, so we're not working on that immediately. But that project was paid for with $310,000 worth of grant money from California HCD. So if you were in the mood to give it away, or give all of that property away, I'd caution you to at least get your money back out of it in the event that you have to return those funds to, to HCD, if you don't follow through with the specific plan. The specific plan itself, all the versions, or all the alternatives that have been proposed, all include a place that would accommodate the HHS building, or some version of it, plus additional government services. So they're not mutually exclusive. They do go, those two things do go together. It, it would be great if I had a specific plan in front of you to approve by the end of the year, but I'm not confident that that's gonna happen. And I don't know what your timeline is on.
We're gonna launch this in November.
You're gonna do your RFP really soon, so that, that, that needs to be at least in the back of your head, that if you're gonna quit working on the specific plan, abandon that, that there may be some clawback from the state to get those funds back.
Well, we have a general idea that you, the plan you've been working on, you brought that before us. So it's at least a good idea to start with, correct?
Sure. And if, and if it's, you approve some version of that, then whoever buys that, or whatever pieces you sell, then they are bound by those development concepts as it moves forward. But it's not like a subdivision plan where all the lots are laid out and that way, it's, it's conceptual. So they're bound by the concepts and not specific layout, yes.
And the, and the, the home requirements and, you know, low, mid, and high.
Right, it would, it's designed to accommodate all price points.
Okay.
But they're not specifically laid out, it's just.
Right, there, there are development bubbles, but not specific subdivision plans, yeah.
But that may be a good thing, because a developer could maybe do it a little bit more economically, you know, than we could.
I was waiting for John to push me out of the way and tell me how much he doesn't want the county to be the developer.
Well, and I think, if you look at the memo, I actually specifically just wrote in there, the county owns 201.37 acres of undeveloped land adjacent to the city of Jackson. It'll be Exhibit E in the RFP, if you wanna move forward with that, and adding that to this particular RFP. And that this property or portions thereof may be available at little to no cost, depending upon terms and conditions of negotiations and/or proposals received. So it's, it's very broad, right? It, it's just another opportunity that I think maybe you ought to take.
Yeah, and I'm supportive of that.
Yeah, me too.
You have options.
Got options. Get it on the tax rolls.
So what do you need, just after public comment? Do you need, just need direction, or?
Yeah, I just need to know if you want to, how much of it you'd like to offer, if you'd like me just to post what I did in the RFP, the way it's written, as you've got it before you.
See what comes through the door.
See what comes through the door.
Yeah.
'Cause we can always turn it down, correct?
You can always turn it down. There's, there's no obligations at all.
Okay.
So.
Probably take public comment now. Any members of the public like to comment on this issue? Boy, you're a quiet bunch this morning. Well, if that's the case, what's the board's pleasure?
Is this direction of staff, or is this?
It could be.
Yeah, direction, we are, like I said, we're looking to launch this in November, get it done pretty quick. We have had challenges over the years at that property, so we are looking to maybe remove some of those challenges, and, and look at new opportunities elsewhere. We do have a local developer, as I mentioned, that is committed to issuing a, a proposal. We also have another interest from another entity here locally that absolutely has the capacity to, to build a, a building for the county. And I think it's, as noted, maybe not in here, but that, that property, maybe I did note it in my, in my memo, but we're using, the needs that we have are about 35,000 square feet, and the building's 50, so we, we're not in need of all 50 either, so we're, anyway.
Yeah, I think, well, it seemed like the board's in agreement, you know.
Well, one thing, though, on your note on the bottom, though, we do have money that we owe on that property, so.
No.
Need to recover that.
No.
I thought we, I thought we paid that.
We own, we own that in fee simple title.
We, we paid it back, we reimbursed.
We did pay back.
We did.
We paid the CFF.
The only money that, is what Chuck was talking about, about through the grant.
HCD, HCD grant?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's, that's if we don't follow the plan at all.
Right.
Okay, but if, if we follow most of it, will that matter?
I mean, it has flexibility, it has alternatives built into it. It's, it's kinda like Kirkwood, same idea. There's, there's a conceptual plan there, but as it, as it develops, it does. You had, you kinda make the projects fit the master plan.
This is just giving you basically some parameters, some leeway, so, and seeing, you know, if you can work some out, some of those people you've been talking to, possibly, and, yeah, I'm fine. Let's go ahead.
See their finished RFP before you send it out, John?
Not, I mean, typically, we don't give that to the board, but, 'cause it's kinda boilerplate stuff.
No, I would just.
Yeah, usually, you know, and we'll form, formulate a committee, I would imagine it would be of two board members, council and the GSA director and the CAO, when you start looking at proposals. That gets into higher level negotiations at that point.
So you're nominating yourself for the committee?
I guess I'm probably kind of chair and vice chair when it gets down to that point, John.
Okay.
I think we're good. You've got direction, I believe you're good, John?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We've been on the item, we've all been waiting for, item 6D, General Service Administration, AMR, Resource Conservation District. This additional space request and discussion regarding alternative space for non-county entities located at GSA.
So this was originally, I believe, placed on consent, and Supervisor Onetto, I think you polled it about a month ago, and so then I rewrote my memo and, and put it back on the, on the board's agenda after talking to you about that. I will let you know that RCD's original request was for an additional 200 square feet. We weren't able to accommodate that, but I did meet with Amanda Watson and staff, and rearranged some things, and I think they acquired about an extra 100 square feet, which is what the Third Amendment in your packet, I think, represents, or represents that floor plan that's in there. But even further with that discussion is that, and there's information throughout here, is the space. A couple of months ago, Chuck Iley and I went walking through the building, looking for space for our Veteran Services Officer. And, and that particular department has some specific needs where having a, its own entrance is, is favorable, and, and having confidentiality is favorable, but as we walked through the building, there's no space. It's, it's completely book solid. UCCE has grown, RCD, NRCS has grown to where there is no more space in that building whatsoever, and, and, and the feds are in there still, free of rent, they don't pay any rent. Most of the time, things are okay. You'll see some of the, my notes that I made in there about parking, or double parking, or leaving doors open, and it just, we have a lot of pressure, a lot of times, from classes from UCCE, or even meetings from RCD. or even meetings from RCD that we didn't used to have 20 years ago when we first opened up the building or even contemplated it. There are some risks in the future with the way the building's being used from a code perspective, an ADA perspective. UCCE and RCD all know that we are jointly and severably liable for those issues, but we're out of space. So, the discussion today, and I've met with Amanda and brought in Karen Warburton too, to have Karen start looking for a grant for UCCE and RCD and to maybe find a grant that could build a building somewhere, because they continue to grow. And they've told me they're going to continue to grow. I know that in some of the areas in UCCE, I think the rooms are either 10 by 10 or 12 by 12, and they've got three people in that one room, to give you an idea. And I know Chuck, through our walkabout, there was no room there. And so, the problem is, is when the county has to start looking for other space for itself when we have space. So, there needs to be discussions, I believe, about where people are going to go in the future. Now, I know those are going to be, you know, those are somewhat challenging questions at times because we recognize the value that both those agencies bring to the county. But you are out of space, gentlemen, so need to figure out what you're going to do in the future.
You're kind of talking about a different, a whole different kind of business, but does HHS have any space available?
Not a lot.
Not a lot. They do, if you reuse the large conference re, purpose some things?
If we wanted to permanently hack up that large conference room, we could. There is a conference room, what we call Conference Room E, that we could dedicate, we could give to somebody and give that up. We've also got that area where we've put the veteran services officer in there, but that is a temporary fix. I don't know where we would move her. That's a challenge now. But those are the only empty spots we've got in that building.
Well, possibly you could utilize some of those conference rooms, so it's not impacting the GSA building so much.
They need much larger...
Well, they could, and for larger, I think they, I don't want to over, I don't want to speak out of turn here. I think UCCE may have used some of those from time to time, I'm not sure, for some of their larger classes. But, you know, the more people you get crammed into a small area, the more conflicts you're going to have and the more issues you're going to have. But aside from all of those things, of which either myself or Glenn can handle on a daily basis, it's the mere fact that I've watched this over 24 years, and you're out of space. So, somebody's got to go somewhere in the future. That's the purpose for this conversation. That's it. And what are you going to do? Now, I, like I said, I've got Karen working on maybe a grant. I know Amanda's good at writing grants as well, and those two can talk freely and have. But, you know, that takes time. But at least it's a start in looking at a solution for where we would put everybody.
Well, they're asking for 200. Do you have 200 now?
No, well, Amanda, hopefully, you'll support me here. We, because I had it on consent originally, we already rearranged, they're already in that area.
Copy your room, kind of?
Yeah, so we, I already said yes, and we did it. Yeah, we did it.
But do you have a desk under the area where they access the attic now?
We removed that ladder there, because that's where it was originally, so it gave them more room by removing that. We had to make some alterations and add the catwalk, but we put it in the facilities area. So, it helped RCD with their space as well. But they're maxed, you know, the space is maxed. There's no more room.
So, what you just said then is the solution is solved right now, and everybody's looking for more space or through grants or something like that?
Well, that's the only solution I have, but at some point, as they continue to grow, and I know they're adding staff or will be adding staff. And if you look at history, you don't have the space to support anymore.
I think we're solved for now, but we just see that there's a future around the horizon.
Well, you're kind of solved. I think you need to have a sign that clearly says, "No meeting activity taking place in the break room," because that break room is a common spot for air employees, but, you know, it's for our employees.
Yeah, to their, to anybody's defense. I've talked with Scott Onnado, I've talked with Sue, I've talked, I've talked to everybody about that. It's, that's all well and good, but when you get 40 people from the public, they don't understand those rules, and there's nobody there watching it all the time. So, you know, it is what it is to some degree. All I can do is continue to remind, and they remind, and do the best thing that they can to keep people out of the employee break room, because it's not a commercial kitchen. And often, it gets used that way, and it's not. So, you know, we remind those things. It's a little, you know, little problem from time to time. Right now, overall, like what Chuck said, like what you're saying, you're right there, you're okay, but you can't go anymore. You can't grow anymore. There's no more space. And I am a little worried about some of the elderly people that do park in the wintertime across the way in the dirt parking lot. I've seen all kinds of creative ways to bridge that water that comes down Airport Road. Even putting pallets across it to create a bridge.
That's one thing. We should be able to fix that pretty easily by putting a little walking bridge across there. Well, let's do it. I mean, it's hazardous right now.
Well, okay, now, you're getting into other code issues and other issues that are exposing us to other risk.
Well, we're exposed right...
Hi?
That isn't even our property, is it?
Well, it's, yeah, it's our, it's county airport property, yeah.
But we're exposed to risk right now because we're making people negotiate that ditch.
Yeah.
Let's make it easier for them to negotiate that ditch. Pallets don't sound very safe or easy.
No. I think, well, we'll talk about that, staff. We'll talk about that and how we can resolve that. Probably the best thing to do right there is put in a culvert, but...
Yeah, that would seem to work.
It would seem to work.
It has to be a long culvert, probably, or else it'd be driving, it'd also be driving an inlet and outlet.
Yeah, you know, you're probably looking at, you know, 50 feet there, 40, 50 feet.
Yeah. As far as the break room issue, is that mainly UCCE? Probably, I think, some of their, they have a lot of people come in.
Yeah, I, yeah, and then there's, I mean, the building is there for their use as well, for their employees and their staff. But, you know, when you have a class that you're doing, the general public doesn't understand that, and they just overrun the room a lot of times. And so, I get complaints from our employees that it's not available for their use, or they can't even go get a cup of water, right, because they've got so many damn people in that room. And it's a small break room. So, I, they're not, not amenable to saying, "Hey, let's ramp up on," I think I can speak for UCCE and RCD in this way. Hey, they'll do a great job of reminding people in the future, but it's not always going to work out well. Parking the other day, we had some lady double parked there. Couldn't get a, you know, we got shipping and receiving through there all the time. Had to go find the lady, have her move her car, and it's, you know, slows our business down. And so, it's, it's just those kinds of things that are leading to these inconvenience conflicts, that I would call them, that I see are going to continue if they continue to grow. And I have all indications that they're going to continue to grow and that they want to grow. And that's not a bad thing necessarily. They're doing the things that they're charged to do, right? And they're benefiting the county. So, the idea here is to open up conversations today to talk about what you are going to do in the future for space. And the only solution that I've come up with so far is to start looking for grants.
GSA Director's Office?
Well, you can certainly have that conversation with Glenn.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, I think, I can't speak for full board, but I think I probably could. I think, I know, I'd say we're very supportive of UCCE, Fire Safe Council, RCD. I think we're also supportive of, one of those entities, if they could ever find a way to move out without having, you know, without bleeding too much, it'd really be helpful. So, that's kind of my position.
Yeah, and I can't remember what Amanda was talking about, she can come up and talk about this, about them being nationally recognized, recognized from the feds as they should be so that they could get funded to even support some rent, which would offset costs like having to stick in a culvert pipe, if that's what we're going to do, right? Whatever you're going to do in the future, but...
Yeah, but no, I mean, if, and they got to stay there a long time, hey, that's, it is what it is, that's fine. Because, I mean, if you look at what they've done as far as, like, for mitigating fire in the county, it's been huge. I mean, I know we had a lot of county roads that we didn't have the resource to really get out there and get the brush cleared in those roads, and the Fire Safe Council got a lot of grants, cleared a lot of roads. I mean, so it's really, in a way, they're integral to the county. So, I understand your tribulations with trying to herd the people up there, but just trying to make it work, John.
And it works now, right now, but like I said, in the future, you guys got to find, you can't, there's no more growth.
Well, I think they understand that.
Yeah, no, they do.
Doesn't mean they won't ask a little bit more, but I mean, at some point, you reach that spot.
Yeah, they're at that spot. So, I don't know what the board wants to do, other than just have that discussions that you're aware of it, and that from my office, we're looking at that solution. I don't know what solutions UCCE or RCD have in the horizon, because I know that they both recognize that they've grown. I know that they both recognize space constraints, parking issues, they all, none of us don't recognize that.
And I think it'd behoove them to keep that fact in mind that, hey, the break room is also for county employees, and try to, try to stretch to people, you know, those large groups, just before it starts, hey, just kind of stop and say, "Look, folks." It wouldn't hurt, because sometimes, okay, hey, we got, we got, we got a class, come on in, here's a class, and nobody kind of lays out, you know, basically directions, how to conduct ourselves.
And you have an office environment. It's like your admin area upstairs. It's quiet. It's an administrative function. General Services has admin functions, but when you bring in the college campus crowd, right? Yeah, it gets a little disruptive with staff, so...
I think we ought to put it off till the first of the year. What do you think?
Well, I think, you know, if you can find appropriate grants, that would be an option seriously to look at. But there's no doubt we have a space problem, so...
The problem with program grants is who, right now, the county is paying for the space, and we're paying in-kind for UCCE, so if they go their own way, or they're going to expect the county to pay for that.
They got a pretty big increase a year or two ago, so they should be, they should be able to swing that.
Well, better think about it now, because it'll come up.
Yeah, so in my short time, 24 years being at that property, to give you an idea, to put that into perspective, NRCS and RCD were not even a thought in anybody's mind at that property. UCD used to have two employees. They were located in the airport building up there, and they held their meetings in the lobby area. So, for four-H, typically with Larry Fawson. So, you know, it's grown. And actually, the other thought or problem I have to figure out is, even if you had a grant to go build, where you're going to go build?
Well, you know, at this time, any members of the public like to comment on this issue?
Amanda Watson, Executive Director of the Amador Resource Conservation District and Coordinator of the Amador Fire Safe Council. First, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for the longtime support of our organizations. I think everyone here, we have several board members here, members of the public, and all recognize the longtime support of the board in supporting these entities. In that 1,005 square feet, we have three organizations that individually bring over a million annually into the county, directly support local contractors, provide... We had a great presentation about the agricultural report this morning, and we work directly with local agriculture, timber, or forested landowners to help against fire prevention and exactly what we talked about, helping landowners and our agricultural property owners meet regulatory requirements and keep ag viable here in Amador County. So, we do serve quite a few bit of purposes when it comes to natural resources here in Amador County. One of the main functions of the Amador Resource, or the Amador Resource Conservation District is a special district of the government. Our banking is done through Amador County. So, we have a close tie to Amador County. The Amador Resource, or Amador Fire Safe Council is a nonprofit, but also a close, direct tie. And as I mentioned, we have the Natural Resource Conservation Service. As John alluded, we are working with them to try to get that, their field service, their local partnership office recognizes a field office to hopefully bring in some funding to help support that, that office. But currently, I'd like, I just want to recognize that the MOU now represents that 1,000 square feet that we are, 1,005 square feet that we are currently occupying with our staff. The one issue in the MOU that I would like to currently recognize, it had been made clear to me that we are, that our MOU is and could be considered on a month-to-month basis. And that is something that, when discussed with our board, it was a great concern that there was not a timeline in there in which the RCD or NRCS or Fire Safe Council, three of those entities that are, well, two of those entities are entirely grant-funded. And so, making a move on a short period would be devastating for those organization and for those eight staff members that work there, not, as well as the county landowners that depend on our services, such as tipping, going to be defensible space. So, I wanted to make sure that we had that addressed in the MOU, that a timeframe would be recognized. So, that was one of the requests brought forward.
I can understand your concern if it is like that, I mean...
Yeah, I wrote my memo without really, I did a cursory read of what Steve gave me, and then I read it carefully, and I left it out. And the reason I left it out without, because they had already done the amendment, because I have the confidence in the relationship between the county and RCD that the county would not...
That's what I'm just going to address. With staff and this board, you know, the board for sure, it would, I don't say it'd ever be a problem, but hey, we're here for a limited time, then we're gone. And things change. And although they're looking for some type of security, saying, hey, if things change, you got a little parachute to get out with.
Exactly, and just to be responsible to our staff and our constituents as we consider them as the special district of the Resource Conservation District, that we can continue to operate and have service and be providing those services that we, you know, are obligated under our grants to provide. It's something that I would request the Board of Supervisors to consider.
So, if you wanted to do that, then my recommendation...
Before you do that, how long have you been in that building?
We've been in that building since...
I put it in my memo, I believe.
Yeah, it is in there. It's before my time definitely.
They moved out in 2004, in December 17. Yeah, 17, 2017.
I understand your concern, but, I mean, and we are government, I understand some of the members of your board, and they're going to take their government, they can just kick us out in a second. But, I mean, there's a relationship that we belt here, and you do so much good for the county. I don't think that's ever going to happen, where we're going to say, "You have 30 days to move out."
So, I know they're worried. I did mention it to them. I'm the one who brought it up originally, that, hey, you know, there's, you're in a month-to-month. So, it wasn't to get them nervous, but I understand that. But they're also not in a position to readily move. Typically, you'll see 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, something like that, to say, "All right, thanks for the good times." They would need more time than that, I believe, to find a home, because of their grants.
You said a year. That seems kind of long to me, but...
Well, they're in a grants, you know, it's not easy to move.
So, you're agreeing with the year?
I would agree with that.
I don't have a problem with the year.
Fine.
But if you want me to do, the reason I'm speaking is because, do you want me to, I can change the amendment so that it's in there, it's solidified, and then just put it back on consent for the next board meeting?
Yep, if that makes people feel better, then fine.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, it's, it just basically memorializing kind of really where we are. I mean, we're not, we're not, we're not... I mean, we're not, we're not, we're not looking to boot them out anytime soon at all.
That's why I wasn't worried about it, but.
Yeah, so if you put it down, it's not. It just gives them some peace of mind.
You got 365 days if it's out.
Thank you, guys. Thank you all for your support. I, I appreciate that. And again, I, we appreciate the long-term support. Um, we are a growing organization. We're working on doing that responsibly under our grants. Um, and we thank you for your continued support.
Just so you know, I have to arm wrestle with my wife on this. She hates grants. She's kinda like crack cocaine roll on them. I say, it's, it's, it's the new America. Um, but we do appreciate your work getting them, cause we kinda need them. But it's too bad it wasn't a different method, but there's, there's not.
I agree.
Yep, I think we're good.
Oh, I'm sorry. There might be somebody.
I think he said with that big increase he got last year, he's offering to move out and use that increase.
Yeah. Good morning, Board, County Council.
Good morning.
Again, Scott Onetto, UC Cooperative Extension. Um, I thought I would just share a couple of comments. I wrote them down, cause I wanted to make sure I hit on a few things since we were mentioned um, throughout the memo and the board packet. So, first, I would like to just publicly recognize why we're here this morning and to personally thank Amanda Watson for her commitment, dedication, and hard work. With her leadership, both as an Executive Director for the Amador Resource Conservation District and the Amador Fire Safe Council, they have brought millions of dollars, as she just mentioned, in grant funds to Amador County. We should be here today congratulating her, the entire board, and also their staff for their continued success and growth. However, uh, instead, I feel like this agenda item has been crafted to do just the opposite. I spoke with Amanda last month. She actually came to me and she had indicated that she had requested more space from G S A Director Hopkins. Although I was not privy to that, those discussions, uh, it is important to recognize the message that this agenda item does send to us that are non-county entities. I would argue that although the Amador Resource Conservation District is not a county government, like us Cooperative Extension, we do act and function as one. Like so many of our elected officials that were voted into county office, the R C D was also voted in as a special district by the people. So, although its funding looks different, I see its intent and purpose to serve the community much the same. I must say that I was shocked when I read this agenda item last night. As I mentioned, I had spoken with Amanda several weeks ago, uh, but there was some details, uh, at the, in the M O U. And also, I was caught off guard when I read this, uh, the memo that's in the packet by Hopkins. Uh, I would just like to turn your attention to a couple of things in the memo, uh, board packet. Uh, under the analysis section in the memo, it says, "The building is currently exceeding its original purpose and experiencing increased use, leading to the accelerated deterioration." I have been in this building since day one with John Hopkins. And although the some departments have come and gone, I would be surprised if the total staff in the building has really changed that much. Uh, I would like to turn your attention also to the memo, um, where it says, "There are several direct and indirect conflicts between the agencies, including issues related to noise, shared counters, uh, in conference rooms, parking, energy use, disrupting county staff production." Again, as these programs expand and bring more people into the building, the county continues to lose the available resources needed for its intended purpose. And then there was an attachment, an email that John Hopkins sent directly to me a couple of weeks ago. And I'll, I'll mention that here in a moment as well. As for conflicts between the agencies, I don't see any conflicts between the agencies in that building. Um, you know, I, I wrote maybe that should've restated and said, I have a conflict with maybe some of those agencies.
Wouldn't you say maybe though, Scott, when you, when you have like classes and ma, master gardener things like that, there's, that's a lot of people.
Day one, that was the original intent of that building when those conversations were happened. It was gonna be the G S A building, the ag building, uh, and UC Cooperative Extension. And at the time, we initially took, uh, uh, housing in that building back in 2000. There was also county I T and the county printing department.
I think the U C E Cooperative Extension, yes, but I mean, that's expanded like a lo, a lot of, um, classes. We have a lot of people. And I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just saying it's, 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 it's an impact.
It certainly is, but I think the impact, I, well, and it, and it has grown, yes. I, I would definitely agree with that. So, I guess I will make a comment just to, um, the master gardeners, because they've been, they have been brought up several times about their conflict in the, uh, in the, uh, break room. So, just to be clear, our master gardeners do meet, uh, for their monthly meetings at the building um, on the third Tuesday of every month between noon and 2:00. And during that time, they usually take a break around 1:00. And, um, these are our volunteers. It's not the general public. These are our volunteers that are coming and meeting. And they don't meet there every single month. Usually, it's about eight times out of the year. The other months, they meet other locations. And during that break time, which is usually again about 1:00, for about 15 or 20 minutes, maybe a half an hour, there is a lot of stuff going on in and out of the break room. There, they bring refreshments for each other. They're going in and out of the, the, the break room, but they're not sitting and I would say dominating that break room. It's certainly busy and it's much busier than any other given day during that month. But I would say it's a major, it's not a, a major inconvenience for staff.
Maybe it's Scott, maybe it's more of a communication issue to other employees, uh, just reminding them
Completely agree.
Of the schedule when they're going to be.
The schedule and also the value that these people that aren't paid to be there during that day and all the stuff that they're doing to the community. They're volunteers that are choosing to be there and they should be respected for that. Um, I, I, I'll just go on to say a couple less things. Um, you know, there was mention about the parking issue. Yes, it's a, it's, it's an issue. In the email, um, it says that, that basically on a daily basis that people have to park, um, across the street in the dirt parking lot. It's not on a daily basis. It's, you know, there are days where there's plenty of room in the, in the parking lot and there's days where there might be something in the conference room and it's busy and that includes people parking off, off-site and across the street. But certainly, um, you know, it's not an ongoing daily basis. Um, I, I'm not even going to, I'm sure you've all read, if you read the packet, um, about the notion of the restroom etiquette. I'm not even going to, to address that comment, uh, this morning.
Well, you did.
I did, but I, I, I have a lot more to, that I could say about that. But, uh, it, to me, again, that goes back to, I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Alright, we'll leave it at that.
You gotta admit though, that building has a lot, to me, I mean, I was here 20 years ago too. It's got a lot more people in it now than it did 20 years ago.
It would be interesting to look at that analysis, cause John made reference that our department has, you know, in a lot of these departments, like UC Cooperative Extension, R C D, and NRCS has doubled or gotten really, really big. I did the math this morning and when we were in the airport office, we did have a pretty small staff. I think we were right around four or five. But when we moved into that, uh, that new building in 2000, we had seven people, not all of them full-time, but we had seven people. Today, in that building, that actually call that place home, we have nine people. Again, not all full-time. So, yeah, we've grown a little bit, but we haven't like, you know, pushed the, the seams across the, the walls. Um, you know, I, I think the biggest thing that I would point out to the board for discussion, again, I, I agree, space is super, super tight. But I, the other analysis that I just quickly looked at this morning was on space. And specifically, if you look at the amount of space that some of us have increased or not increased over the years, um, since 2000, when the building was first occupied, uh, we have acquired one additional office in that building, which again, equivalents to about 120, maybe 140 square feet increase. Uh, the agricultural department from my, you know, from what I can tell, hasn't really changed in terms of their square footage. In the middle of that drawing that you have in your board packet, there are two very large bays. One of them, of course, is titled NRCS R C D for 1,100 square feet. And of course, when that building was built, like I just mentioned, the R C D was not in there. But at that time, that was I T and maybe some other departments. Um, in that other bay, it was county printing. Over time, of course, things have changed. People, uh, departments get moved, shuffling occurs. Uh, and G S A has taken over that third bay, which is probably 12, 1,200 square feet. So, if any departments have significantly increased their size in that building, I would point to G S A. So, lastly, I would just say, uh, there's a couple of very strong statements at the very end of that memo that I think it's worth reading. It says, "Historically, cooperative agreements involving shared space and resources often begin with manageable impacts that can become overwhelming, again, as non-county organizations expand, leading to the eventual need for separation." I take, um, I take that to heart and I, I, I don't think that is the view of the board or the county, but I just wanna make that a very point that when I see that kind of language written from county staff, it is very concerning to me. So, as I stated before, I would like to recommend that the board, uh, recommends that they do, uh, approve the, the increase in space for the R C D and they also evaluate whether or not it should include language, uh, that they aren't on a month-to-month basis. Thank you.
I think the space issue's already been solved, I believe.
Yes, it got solved day one. Amanda came to me and told me what her dilemma was. We have a huge plotter printer that was in that space. We wheeled it out, put it in our admin office up front, which greatly increased the space that she could use. And so, it was solved right then and there. And that's how it should happen.
I think he means the board's already taken action to approve what you already just requested today.
But Scott, you, you need to remember, John did put in there, the value of these programs is acknowledged, so.
And then, and then there's a key but.
Always.
And I agree, and I agree with that. And I, you know, John and I have gone around for the years, you know, we've, we've played basketball together. We shoot the bull a lot. And I do respect John an awful lot for his career with the county. Uh, but when there's, you know, words go a long way and especially when it is public record, uh, there were just certain things in this memo today that took, um, that took me a bit by surprise. I was not expecting to be here today other than just to show my support for the R C D. And then when I actually saw us listed out as potential action for discussion of how to potentially look at relocating other non-county agencies, uh, that ruffled my feathers a bit.
I, I can see that. You made it pretty plain, which I appreciate. I'm, I appreciate bluntness. Um, but I will say, I mean, if an opportunity ever came up, one of them could satellite off somewhere, it'd probably be a good thing.
Oh, I agree. I, I, I'm ecstatic about the opportunity to build an ag complex in this county. And I would work diligently with county government and our partners to potentially look at funds for that. I think that would be an amazing opportunity. Well, thank you.
Anne Heisenbuckle, and I'm a master gardener. And I just wanna add one fine point. The public education classes are held on Saturday and I've never seen very many staff there on Saturdays. So, that should not be much of a conflict.
That helps. Okay. Appreciate the clarification.
Thank you.
He looks like he's in a mission. I think we're in trouble.
I'll be brief, because I know, uh, you guys are up against a public hearing. Uh, John Heisenbuckle, the smarter half of, uh, of the Heisenbutts ran up here.
Oh, with that comment, Mr. Heisenbuckle, I don't think you are. Just off that conversation. She must love you.
Anyway, John Heisenbuckle, I'm a member of the, the Amador Fire Safe Council Board. Uh, when, a couple of things I wanted to point out. Amador Fire Safe Council has no staff. We, we contract for staff services through the R C D. They're critically important to us. Uh, uh, we, we got away from, uh, having paid staff, uh, back in 2015 and the R C D works out great for us and it works out great for the, for the R C Ds. So, that, that's why we have a stake in this conversation. It, it sounds like the, the, the space issue's been resolved. And it, it sounds like, uh, the board is okay with ma, making the amendment say, uh, we get a year's notice or R C D gets a, a year's notice.
Yeah, I think it's a, I don't have a problem. It's, I think it's a, overall, it's a friendly relationship. There might be a little bit of pushing and shoving, but yeah.
And, uh, I, I've worked up some numbers since the, uh, since the R C D moved into that space at the ag building, um, in 2017, just the Fire Safe Council has brought in, uh, between 12 and 13 million dollars to create fuel breaks in the county and, uh, and to do the ingress, egress road clearing. Uh, that, and, and the road clearing, uh, money, like Chairman Onetto pointed out, that's money that the county doesn't have to spend. So, I, I think, uh, uh, Fire Safe Council is making a significant contribution uh, directly to the county by off, offsetting your, your expenses. And, uh, boy, I like the relationship working, working with the county road people. Um, anyway, then, thank, thanks for helping work out the, the space and the notification.
Just too bad we can't, I realize these days are gone. Too bad we can't operate with a handshake agreement anymore.
You're right. Uh, but, uh, if, if we did get, uh, R C D did get evicted, that would throw us into a major turmoil.
And it would also get supervisors recalled too.
Yeah. Uh, we've got a lot of money in the bank, but you guys know how grants work. You can only use it for specific purposes. So, we don't have the flexibility to, to move right now.
Yeah, I will say that, um, your ingress, egress work, I mean, I had a lot of, a lot of members of the public said, wow, that worked. The county did, it was just great. And it's, well, it's actually, the Fire Safe Council, you know, got grants and the people really liked it. And I think it's really, it's also important for even fire. And you know, did you ever hear any more about the, the Mill Creek Fire?
Uh, yeah, but I checked with, uh, one of our board members, uh, who's a representative from Sierra Pacific Industries. He said that Mill Creek Fire, the Tiger Creek Fire, whatever, uh, burned up to one of our fuel breaks that we installed in there since 2020. And that Cal Fire actually used our fuel break, uh, for one of their bomber targets in, in case the fire got more widespread, so.
Yeah, that fire, that fire worried me, Mr. Heisenbuckle, because I don't remember the public from over like Tiger Creek, Mill Creek. It's like some of the worst country in the whole county.
It's steep and brushy, but thankfully, uh, now, we've, we've got a fuel break, uh, about mid-slope all, all the way from Doakes Ridge down to Highway 26. So, it came in handy.
It very much protected my home. I'll say that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Onetto, members of the board, Frank Lashinsky. I'm on the board of the Fire Safe Council. I have just a very short statement that I would like to say to the board. First of all, I'd like to thank you uh, for your support for all the years you've been patient with us. We have not always been the most efficient organization, but that has changed. And, uh, on that note, uh, one of the things that this county deals with uh, as far as a potential for a real problem in our community is wildfire. Everybody's aware of it. But as you proceed down the road here, and there may be opportunities for a location that would be more suited for a relocation, um, for our groups, uh, I would hope that you would prioritize that with the, with the thought that the work that we. we do will hopefully prevent a burnover, and we're beginning to see more and more of these terrible situations that are going on through our country where devastation is just enormous. We don't want that for this county, and if we can do enough work right up front and mitigate some of these hazards to either prevent them or contain them, I think that's probably one of the highest priorities we have. We do not want, um, this area just obliterated with a, with a really strong fire, so, uh, thank you. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Not at this time.
Any other members of the public? Seeing that, I think probably were, probably good directions, John, you're good? Okay. Well, thank you, and thank you, everybody, for coming. Moving on, we have item 6E.
Public hearings.
Public hearings.
Oh, wow, 11 o'clock. Take a, I will come back, say, uh, at 11 o'clock, take about a 6, 7 break.
Right, yeah. Public hearing, yeah.
Yeah, come back to the public hearing. Pardon?
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Well, yeah, well, um, so at this time, we're going to the public hearing, and once we open, open up for public comment, you can come up and say your piece then. This is item 7A, the survey department, public hearing, adoption of the resolution of approval for a pedestrian equestrian trail abandonment and the public easement within it for a certificate merger for Michael and Valerie McKinney. The properties involved in the set abandonment and merger are lots 89 and lots 92 of Lake Comanche Village subdivision, unit 1, is recorded in book 3 of subdivision maps at page 8 through 23. Assessor parcel number is 003-310-007 and 003-310-008. Merging the lots will allow applicants to explore future landscaping and make plans.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. How are you?
Good morning, Mr. Pitto. So, like always, it's wonderful to see you.
It's good to see you guys, and the nice lady. Um, this is exactly what you stated. It is a, a merger for the McKinneys of, uh, two lots, and the one in unit 1 of Lake Comanche Village. They happen to have a pedestrian equestrian easement going through the middle of that lot that along concurrently with the merger, they wish to abandon. Um, we have no problem with it. We understand that there has been a bit of a controversy over these equestrian and PUE easements in the past. Um, I've been advised by county council that we cannot enforce private contracts, and the HOA articles, bylaws, et cetera, are private contracts, so we follow our ordinances, and we come together here with the recommendation that you adopt the abandonment and adopt the, uh, merger. Thank you. And I have ready for any questions.
Well, I talked to you briefly during the break, but as long as the, um, applicant knows, they're going to be fighting with the association after this.
Yes, I, I just understood that, and that's something that's beyond what we deal with, so that's a private matter between the owners and the HOA. And we, it, it's a good project in my mind.
Any other questions for the board members? At this time, we'll open up the public hearing, so if you'd like to speak about this matter, now's your time.
Yes, when Mr. McKinney first purchased his property, um...
Would you please state your name for the record, please?
I apologize. My name is Deborah Cortino, and I live right behind the lot. It is my backyard view. When Mr. McKinney first purchased this property, he said, "I want it to look nice, I want it to look nice," and we thought, "Great. He was our neighbor, we were happy, they were nice to us." Anyway, my partner and I went to South Dakota for a week, and when we returned, this was a budding, uh, property line. The vehicles were there right up against our line. I had to call Phyllis, the HOA president. I didn't want to do that. I never have called her before, and she contacted his wife, which was unusual, I thought she would contact Mr. McKinney. Anyway, when evening came and he got home, he removed the vehicles. However, you will see pictures of wire and tires. The wire is a hazard to wildlife, and it's been there for a while. I don't know what the tires are for unless he's going to open up a Les Schwab franchise, so they are there and continue to be there, along with tiki lights, and I don't know what they're for, but they scare the wildlife. Here. Also, I have been in correspondence with Phyllis Garrett. She said if this goes through, the law owner will be sued. There's no reason for us to look at Fred Sanford's junkyard from our backyard.
Yeah, that doesn't really have anything to do with the merger, though.
That doesn't matter, I'm here anyway.
That's fine. You, you talk about anything you want to talk about, as long as it's legal.
Exactly. I don't really know what the project is, what he plans to do, because that's never actually been discussed. All I know is he said, "I want this to look nice," and when we came home, obviously, he lied to us.
You can speak to code enforcement?
I tried that, they don't answer. There's one person doing code enforcement, I know who she is, and she has tons of work to do for one county, which is getting bigger all the time.
That would be the way to go.
She never calls back. She's very busy doing volunteer work with Tri County Wildlife Care and Preston Castle.
You said you were or she was?
She was. I know her. I know her through volunteerism. And he knows putting junk on there is wrong because as soon as Phyllis gets a hold of them, he removes it.
Are you talking about like, looks like maybe five tires? Is that what you're referring?
Five or six tires, yes. And the wires there. I remember the wire for free just because it's a wildlife hazard. I'm surprised nothing has gotten stuck in there yet, like a bunny or a bird.
I mean, overall, the place, this place looks pretty clean. The wire is a little bit.
It's horrible, and it's a lot bigger than the pictures.
Could they, could they put things on the property even without this, this merger?
No, because it wouldn't be his property. And also, those vehicles you saw from the beginning photos, they're fuel hazards. If anything leaks and causes a fire, then what? That'll be a hazard not only to his house, but to mine and every other neighbor around us. Because that lot faces the backs of all the houses.
Was there a fire extinguisher there or something?
Yes, there is a fire extinguisher there. I don't know why. I just, I literally didn't shake my head. I have no clue.
No, I mean, really, I mean, overall, this place looks really pretty. The wire's a little bit out of place, but his place looks very well taken care of, really.
Actually, you didn't see it when we first came back from vacation, and the cars were everywhere. And I don't, I don't know why. I mean, it's a mess. Also, he has tiki lamps all over the place. It reminds me of a cat urinating on the property to say, this is mine, this is mine. And it does scare the wildlife.
Yeah, I get, I get the picture. I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah. But having to stare at that every day from my yard, why? You know, I didn't do nothing to him.
There's the hell of a lot worse looking places than that around the county.
I came from the hood. I don't want to go back by living there.
Okay.
Why should I have to?
You made it pretty clear.
I'm trying.
Any other concerns or just kind of what you've stated?
I'd like to know what he really plans on doing with the property, honestly.
Yeah, might want to ask him. I don't know. But it's his property.
We don't talk anymore.
Okay. I understand that, too. You have any more comments or?
No, I just like my photographs back. Thank you.
Okay.
They're right here, Deborah. Thank you.
Okay, that's it.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, I'll keep Phyllis Garrett in the loop.
Okay. Any other members of public like to comment?
Morning, border. I'm new to all this.
Good morning.
I'm Michael McKinney. I'm the said owner of the lots.
Okay.
I don't even know where to go after her comments. After I purchased a lot, I was very, very busy working. So it took approximately three weeks or so for me to move my ATVs, my car trailer, my tow dolly, and one vehicle to that spot. I'm a small business owner of a repair shop. I was on a NASCAR Southwest Tour race team. I know what it's like to have confined space and parking. Everything was very squared up, very nice, tight, clean, covered up.
I mean, you actually, you actually think you have an ATV in your property?
We live in the country.
I know, I'm kidding.
Yeah, it's like our side of the, our side where our house is, around the propane tank and around our camper, would just look like a, look too busy. And since we owned another lot now, I moved him over there after three weeks of waiting. So I didn't see it being an issue. I made it look nice, neat, clean. My old blue Chevy truck.
Pretty organized to me, so.
Right along the property line down in the middle of the lot, it looked clean. It was parked nice. Her comment about the tires that are there, they're not on that lot. They're on my house lot, which she obviously didn't notice. She's got me on the wiring. I'm actually going to go home today after I close my shop, and I'm going to move the wiring because of wildlife. I never actually thought of that. That's a very good point. I'm going to move that. The tiki lights.
You know, all that stuff really, Mr. McKinney, is immaterial, what we're doing here today.
Okay.
Just so you understand that.
Okay. The biggest thing about me merging lots is because of the giant watershed going through the lot. It starts on the very backside of my lot on the left rear corner, comes from the neighbor behind, and then it proceeds to go right through the vacant lot and into the next lot over. And it's right down the middle. I mean, I'm already prepared to deal with that. Back in oh seven, my realtor, who's my cousin that lives next door, showed me, I guess they're counting maps, of placement of a house on the back part of the lot. And they already started a septic between her house and the watershed, but then stopped in oh seven. I don't know why. I never got details. But it's like, it's a very convoluted, screwed up lot to try to build a house and that type of thing because of the watershed. The watershed inhibits everything.
That might be why they stopped.
Exactly. My plan for it.
I will say, I do appreciate your tolerance and patience, too. So thank you for that.
I've grown.
You're going to have to grow.
I've grown through the years.
You have to grow a lot, my friend.
I was a shop foreman for Nissan for fourteen years. So I had to walk the line between employees and management. So I've kind of learned pretty well. Just the fact that it's such a convoluted thing in trying to work around the watershed, I've already accepted that. I've been walking my lot, trying to figure out in the distant future, I plan to build a shop to store my things so they're not parked outside and have a place to tinker when I'm retired. I'm still debating on whether I'm going to do it on the backside of the watershed or the front side closest to the street. But I keep favoring that side. Either way, I have to call out the, I think it's the forestry service or somebody that deals with the watershed to tell me where I can build around it. And I'm already, I'm already accepting their answers on where I can build around it. I have no problem with that. I also want to landscape the lot. And that's a big thing for me. And I want to plant gardens for my wife. Our side of the, our lot eating, I'm sorry, our lot ninety-two where our house is, the septic has pretty much consumed our lot. The sandbar would be a perfect place for shop. Can't do it there. Around our oak tree, they put the fingers of the septic all the way around the oak tree. Our whole backyard is consumed with septic. So it really makes it almost impossible for me to build a storage shop and to plant gardens and put greenhouses and sheds and stuff. Makes it almost impossible.
I would say you pretty well made your case, would be my guess. I mean, so.
Well, yeah, I, we wanted landscape and it, this just makes it easy.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't see the board having, I mean, the board has some questions for you.
But you know that the homeowners association is probably going to oppose this.
I have read their bylaws and such, front and back. My wife read them again last week preparing for this meeting. My realtor, who's my cousin, lives next door, read them before I even bought the lot. Can't find anything in and against merging or anything such. And the way I see it is they have no legal authority over my lots. They have no legal jurisdiction over my lots. And at the end of the day, if it does become in front of a judge, the judge is pretty much going to ask whose names are on the deeds of the lots? My name and my wife's name. And it's done. We own the lots. The HOA does not own the lots. Phyllis Garrett, that's causing me a lot of grief, does not own the lots. We own the lots. It's our decision what we want to do with it, and of course, yours to approve it.
Just so you know, it's coming. I think.
Oh, God, yes.
We've approved these before.
The person most recent to merge, I was at his house yesterday discussing this because he was curious about today. And he's already receiving legal letters, and he's already prepared to fight it. And I'm going to, I'm prepared to fight it with him. And he's vice versa with me. And all the surrounding neighbors around me are on board for this, except for the one that spoke up.
Yeah, I'm not sure why they haven't just abandoned those equestrian and pedestrian trails.
I haven't either. This, this HOA is fifty-four years old. I mean, it's pretty outdated. I don't understand it, but all I care is proceeding with what I want, which I've always dreamed to have a property in, in the country. And that's what I'm moving forward with.
I will say this, Mr. McKinney, years ago, I bought a piece of ground and paid more money for it than I should have. It was right next to where I lived. And I'm glad I did. I was just trying to avoid neighbor fights.
Here's the other reason I'm doing this. Kitty corner to the very end of my property that I'm merging with, hopefully. They sold it earlier this year. They're currently building a house there. That's one of the main reasons I bought the lot is so nobody could build a house there or anything. And we have our view. We can do what we want. We can create our own view.
You're controlling your destiny. I get it.
We control our destiny and our life and our peace of mind every day.
Anyway, I think we're probably, unless you have any more comments, I think you made your case, we're probably ready to take action, I would think. Unless there's some other members of public would like to address this item?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to close public hearing.
Have a motion by Act and a second by crew to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous. Looking for action.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolutions of approval and issue the certificate.
Second. We have a motion by Act and a second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous. And thank you. You're welcome. Moving on, the item seven B, the planning department, consideration of planning commission's recommendation to approve zone change ZC dash two four six dash three. The zone change, change affects one hundred forty-two parcels in supervisor district one, which are currently zone X special use district, which is inconsistent with the land use designation adopted in twenty sixteen general plan use, use element update. The planning commission's recommendation is to rezone the affected parcels to R one A single family residential agricultural district. Just an item, for some people out there in Zoom or in the audience, I've had a number, a number of people that were quite concerned. Is this some secretive effort by some individual individuals to, you know, build massive housing around the county? And the answer is no, it's not. It's basically housekeeping, basically, trying to get our, our zoning and compliance with our general plan. So just want to put that on the record. It's not some nefarious big subduers and come in under the guise of housekeeping. Shepherd.
Thank you. Nicole Shepherd with the planning department. The county of Amador is initiating zone changes for properties which have a zone district classification that is inconsistent with the land use designation adopted with the twenty sixteen general plan land use element update. During the county's preparation of this update, it was determined that the X special use districts history as a placeholder for future zoning classification had served its purpose and was overly restrictive, and that it does not allow a mix of permitted compatible uses as is typical of most zoning districts. This change aligns with the county's general plan and aims to ensure consistency and compliance with the state and local regulations. In accordance with California Environmental Quality Act, the lead agency intends to consider a notice of exemption. The planning commission, following a public hearing on September twenty-fourth, recommended approval of the sequel exemptions and the zone change to the board of supervisors.
Any comments?
So all of them are being switched to R one A from X?
Correct.
And that's compatible with all the surrounding parcels that they're, you know, adjoining?
Correct. And their underlying general plan designation.
Okay. So these are all parcels that people could build, like, are they all like five acres or bigger or?
They have range in size. I think most of them are five acres or larger, but some of them are several hundred acres.
Oh, okay. So why wouldn't they, if there's several hundred acres, why wouldn't they be like zoned ag or something like that?
The R one A zoning is very similar to the uses currently taking place on the parcels and provides a balance of single family residential and agricultural zoning uses.
Okay. Could they apply to have their parcel rezoned as ag or something or have a Williamson Act?
They could if they are able to meet the minimum qualifications for the Williamson Act.
Okay.
Is there, are there any cases where somebody would lose the right they have now? If, if the rezone takes place, would they lose any rights? Because most of what I've heard is they require your use permit now or they would require a permit in the future?
Correct.
Either way. But is there any case where that's not true?
Any existing use is currently taking place on the parcel, even if it is nonconforming with the proposed R one A zoning district, would continue to be an allowed use, nonconforming. In this case, the R one A zoning does have more by right uses that is allowed in the X district.
That's why the one person was saying, oh, they could put a slaughterhouse on there with R one A. But realistically, that's not going to happen because it has to go through the approval process with the board. And if there's a lot of opposition, it most likely won't happen.
Correct. That is it. That would be a discretionary project that would have to go through public review and environmental review.
Can they petition to stay as an X if they want to?
Yes. And we have had several property owners request, not for any of these parcels, but passed.
But yeah, thank you.
But, you know, a slaughterhouse is not part of, it's not a by right use in R one A, is it?
Correct. That is not a by right use.
Okay.
There's a lot of uses that are by right, but they can try to do it with.
Yeah, they need a conditional.
With the proper permitting.
Yeah.
Well, I think at this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is any members of the public that'd like to comment on this issue? If you would, just please state your name for the record and sign in.
Brian Rottweiler, one of the parcel owners, Goose Hill Ranch.
What was, I hear the last thing you said?
Rottweiler. Rottweiler. So questions, I guess I don't really understand this a hundred percent, but if this was a general plan change in twenty sixteen, why are they doing it now?
I'm going to answer for you here. It's a good question.
He's coming. He's right behind you, sneaking up on you.
Yeah.
Good. Morning, Chuck Beatty with the planning department. So it was approved in twenty sixteen. The, the concept was to get rid of the X designation because it's not really a zoning district. It only allows one use, and that's ag. And if that's not what you want to do with it when you already own it, it kind of restricts your ability to do much of anything with it. The reason why it took so long to get to this point was our GIS was defunded in twenty ten or twenty twelve. And so it was a painstaking process to get the number of parcels whose general plan designation changed in twenty sixteen and all the parcels that needed a zone change to be compatible with that put together. And there was a lot of, you know, paper map work done in the meantime. But recently, our, our most recent planner who just left found an AI app that made that work almost overnight. So we were able to put all those parcels together and proceed with the zone changes. And all in all, there were about eighteen thousand acres that were zoned X that are being moved into R one A countywide.
Great. Another question, thank you, is, so the cleanup from a fire that took place, Goose Hill Ranch fire, was, took about eighty-five percent of our property out from us, started by somebody down the road. So I've been doing cleanup out there. Does the zoning change affect equipment? And am I going to be required to get permits now that I wouldn't normally have to get being zoned X versus R one A? Okay, there we go.
In regards to the permitting for fire cleanup or use of the heavy equipment on the property, any required permits, like such as building permits, would stay the same?
Nothing additional.
No, nothing in addition.
Yeah, my understanding, if you move fifty yards of dirt, you have to get a permit for that. So. So, I'm just trying to reduce costs on that. We have no help from anyone to do the cleanup. We've taken out seven hundred and thirteen trees so far and graded some small areas. Um, just trying to prevent erosion, so I'm trying to just decide if that change is gonna affect me that way.
So it sounds like. That, that would be a grading permit you would need, um, and this doesn't affect the grading permit at all.
Yeah, it's the same in both zonings.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Does the R one A affect a second dwelling on the property?
Accessory dwelling units or a second single family dwelling, uh, would be, remain the same between the X zoning and the R one A.
Perfect. That's all I have for the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board. I just ask if you guys proceed with this action that you exclude, um, my parcel and just leave it X, if that's possible.
Would you have a parcel number?
I don't have it on me, Brian. I can.
I guess it basically is give us kind of a location, your name, and that shouldn't be a problem, Chuck, I think, to. Yeah, is, is it under your name or what's it?
Yeah, yes, it's under my name, Brian.
Jason Kazad?
Yep.
Okay.
Can we, can I ask why?
I, I don't have a great reason for that, um, other than I feel like I can probably get it back to R one A or ag if I'd like to, but moving it back to X would be impossible once it goes to R one A.
Right, but you have more prescribed right by going to R one A than you do X. You're supposed to ask for a lot of permits and that's the reason I'm just kind of curious, other than the ag itself.
Yeah, I'm not super clear about that. And the fact that I could go in and change it back, if it's X now, go back to R one A, which is, is that true? That if it's X, I can go in and request you guys to move it to R one A or ag at any time?
You could apply, if you choose to keep it zoned X today, you could apply for a zone change to R one A in the future.
Something that would be easily done or not overly complicated.
Um, it would most likely require environmental review and be processed as a discretionary project.
You'd have to app, apply, pay for the application. You'd, you'd have to do the zone change. Right now, the county is doing cleanup. It's doing the zone change on behalf of the property owners. But if you don't do it now, then you'll, you'll, it'll be up to you. Because it, it does eventually have to change, because the, the general plan is like, controls everything, and the general plan says, but whatever the general plan designation is, it says, here's the zone districts that are allowed in this general plan designation. It'll list five or six. X doesn't exist, so, uh, in the new general plan. So at some point, it does have to get cleaned up, and, and like some people said, R one A has a list of by right uses that's much longer than X. X has one by right use, I think. Um, and so anything else except that one by right use that you might want to do, um, would require a use permit. So more, more fee, more.
But you're saying in the future, irregardless, I would have to probably put it into R one A, or it would.
Or, or something else.
Or something else.
That's compatible with the general plan.
You know, a question, Greg, so if he wanted to wait a while, could he, could he still come back in two weeks or a month and say, hey, can you include me in this process?
Well, if, I don't know if planning's got another batch that he could be included in after he's done some more review.
There's one more batch going to the planning commission tonight, and that'll be on your agenda in two weeks, and then that would be the end of them.
Yeah, so, so basically, he, he doesn't have to be in that planning commission. It's already, they've already made their recommendations. So once they make the recommendations on this new batch, that batch will come before the board of supervisors and, and be approved, and that'd be kind of the end of it.
Uh, yeah, I mean, he can still request it individually at, at any time that he wants to. I'm just saying to get included with this group and not have to pay fees for it, you know?
Yeah, but he'd have to pay for it.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Once those are advertised, we can't add parcels into, we can take them out, but we can't add more.
Okay, so what's his drop dead date to get included?
Tonight.
Tonight.
Okay, that's, okay, I was wondering about that.
So I guess in light of, yeah, if I'm gonna have to use.
Pretty low risk, Jay.
Yeah, if I'm gonna have to put in something anyways eventually, then we'll just go along.
And the county's paying.
Yeah, the county's paying for it.
I, I don't think you're gonna regret it either. Um, Mr. Kern, who was in for district two last week, had concerns because he wants to, the family wants to do a solar farm on there. Well, the, the problem is coming with the solar company. They just don't want to come in and, and file for the permits. It's not that they can't do it. I, I think you're gonna have probably more rights granted to you with R one A than with the X.
Okay.
Unless you want to put in a nuclear facility or something like that, then. But it probably, it probably, you wouldn't get the use permit anyway.
I don't know, would the neighbor complain, Brian?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You can never tell on that one, Jason. Sometimes things are eye-opening, I gotta, I must say.
Good morning. My name is Vic Mondani.
Good morning.
And, uh, good morning, board. And, uh, the question I have is what is the tax impact on that to change the zoning? Uh, part of the reason I'm asking this is what I read, I just briefly went over it the other night, is that R one A, uh, you can zone, uh, to a, what is the minimum zoning parcel size? I saw it as forty thousand, uh, square feet, which is forty-two thousandths an acre, just about an acre. How, how does that, what does that give you? What does it allow you to do changing from X to R one A as far as parcel size?
Um, in regards to parcel size, a minimum parcel size is designated by the general plan designation, and that is not proposed to change. And so whatever your current minimum parcel size is would remain.
Okay, so then it kind of does limit the value of changing from X to R one A. There are some side benefits, but you still wouldn't be able to, uh, put smaller parcel sizes, say of, of, I have thirty-five acres. So I couldn't really change that to five acre parcels.
Depending upon what your general plan designation is, that would determine your minimum parcel size and whether you could subdivide the property.
This X zoning wouldn't change that, wouldn't affect that at all. So you have, you have like your zoning map and you have your parcel size map. So you can change zoning all you want. It doesn't, doesn't affect the parcel size, which you, not saying you can't change the parcel sizes. That'd be practically anyone.
Okay, uh, but R one A does allow for smaller parcel sizes? Yes?
The minimum parcel size is not determined by the zoning.
All right, and do we have any, does this, does this affect property tax values?
We have been referring, um, property owners to the assessor's office for that question, but they have informed us that this zone change would not trigger reassessment of their property.
So we'd still be under Prop thirteen far as the two percent increasing per year?
I, I would refer you to the assessor's office.
That's probably a great question, but I, I.
Your property tax is gonna be based on what you paid for the property and any improvements, the value of any improvements you put on the property. Has nothing to do with the zoning.
All right, those were my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The other members of the public? No Zoomers?
Not at this time.
At this time, we'll look for a motion to close the public.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing by Forrester and a second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carries unanimous? Looking for a motion.
Move to, um, declare the adequacy of the, that the CEQA categorical exemption is adequate.
Second.
Have a motion by Forrester, second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carries unanimous?
Move to approve the change in zoning. Were there any, would that wanted to stay in X?
No, I don't believe so.
Not at this time?
We did not receive any comments regarding property owners that wanted to remain in X.
Okay, then I move to approve the ordinance to change the zoning of the affected parcels and, uh, also include the findings.
I'll second.
A motion by Forrester, second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carries unanimous? Thank you. With that, we're gonna go into, this, the public meeting is over. We're going to a closed session.
We got two agenda items still.
Oh, you're right. Thank you. I'll go find them.
Six E.
Six E.
Uh, six E, board of supervisors, discussion of possible action relative to appointment of a primary and alternate delegate to two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five CSAC board of directors.
I would think Supervisor Brown would, he's been the alternate. And, um, I don't know if you two want it or if you want to wait. I don't think there's an urgency to appoint the, the alternate or the.
I, I could wait, I mean.
But the seated, they have to have somebody seated for November's meeting, right?
Correct.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Well, I think I'll represent through the, into the year, but if Jeff gets appointed, then Jeff.
That's part of their letter is that who's ever elected will be the representative, um, on the November meeting. So that's, that was the kind of the question. So do you want?
No, that's fine. That's fine.
But, you know.
You're it then. Then he's it, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. I mean, you've been attending some meetings already anyway.
Oh, yes.
Cancel. I'm not worried about that.
Obvious choice.
Yeah. I would move that, um, we felt just the delegate position at this time with Supervisor Brown.
The primary?
The pri, as the primary.
Yeah.
Your motion?
And leave the alternate position till after the new board is seated?
Yeah.
Well, um, yeah, okay, so when is, when is the meeting? What is it? When's the final drop dead date? Because the election's November fifth, right?
It needs to be done now.
Yeah.
It does, okay, all right.
Well, it needs to be done for their purposes, um.
But just the primary is satisfactory?
Well, they probably want both, but I think that's all we're gonna give them.
The new, the new board can decide on who, who's gonna be the alternate.
Okay, we'll give them placeholder as the second.
That's it.
So you made a, Richard, you made the motion, right?
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Forrester and a second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carries unanimous?
Thank you for the confidence.
No problem.
Yep, it's gonna cost you. Moving now to item six F, review and possible approval of September twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four board, board of supervisors, meeting minutes.
I have, um, I only see one change. On the, uh, public hearing for the zone change from the planning department, just Mr. Roger Lamo. His name should be L E, capital L E, capital M A U X.
Now with that one change, any other changes?
I would move approval of the minutes without correction.
Motion by Forrester and a second by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That carries unanimous? Hey, now, this portion of the public meeting is over. We're going to a closed session.
Goodbye.